Today's February 2nd. And the time is, what time is it? 9:03, so let's, let's call this Port of Olympia Commission Work Session to order. And Sam, go ahead with your introductory remarks.
Great, well, thank you Commissioner, and I think I will start with very brief introductions and then then you can just, you know, I don't know if you've all met Jim Darling, who is our star guest today. And I'm going to brag on him without him knowing it at this, but Jim was a, the former Executive Director for the Port of Bellingham for a number of years and led them through some, you know, really strategic decisions, including the, I believe he actually condemned the Georgia Pacific or partnered with people to take control of that site. And previous to that, he was a Public Works Director in the state of Illinois, so we share that kind of, you know, love of of public works and utilities. And then he was a principal in Maal Foster Alongi and now is on his own with Lee Wood Strategies. Jim is, I think, a, just a leading strategic thinker in the port world, and I feel very, very fortunate to have him helping guide us and set us on our path and begin our strategic planning process. So with that, I just, and I believe the new commissioners met him at least briefly at the WPPA introduction for new commissioners, but and you were just chatting with Commissioner Evans, so you know her, but Commissioner Ayew. Just like to say hello and then Commissioner Downing.
Yeah, hi Commissioner.
Yeah, hello, we did meet briefly at the, at the conference and I heard Amy say she enjoyed it, I also enjoyed it very much, it was a great learning experience and you know, the information you guys had was really outstanding, so looking forward to today.
I'm glad to hear that, it's always a challenge, right, because it's, it's not the most exciting topic sometimes, but it's, it is for you as newly elected commissioners, it's very important, so thanks.
Of course, you remember Commissioner Downing.
Yep, well Commissioner, how are you?
Hi Jim. Happy to be here, looking forward to the next few hours of discussing strategic plan issues and the direction of this particular port.
Great.
Great. So by way of background, we also engaged the services of Maal Foster Alongi last year to do an assessment of the Port of Olympia. We sent that out to you last evening, just for, for your background, Jim will be referring to that assessment and and in fact, this strategic planning process is really a continuation of some of the, the steps that we've already been putting into place at the, at the port, and so it's an overall effort for us to really think more strategically at the port and also to better align the the direction that's being given by the commissioners and really create a system whereby you can make those strategic decisions and, and give, give us a staff that, that clear direction and have those decisions informed by some rigorous analysis, including financial analysis. So that I'm also just going to do a little bit of where we are in the process of, Sheila, if you can pull up PowerPoint for me, and this is for both the commissioners and also looking to the members of the public who are attending, we, you know, Eric Johnson has the concept of the perfect citizen and that if they are attending a port meetings regularly, they should be able to kind of know where we are in our processes, know that, that, you know, where we are in the consideration of things, and so this is just really to orient you, if you go up to the next slide, please. So we had a great plan to start the year off and we had time to, a plan to have a two and a half day retreat down at the Port of Klammer and then, you know, the new year began and the Omicron cases just spiked, and so we, we both with outages of our own staff here as well as just being cautious about gathering in purpose and in person, so we decided to cancel those. And so the next few meetings in February are really, are reconfiguring of that, that kind of retreat concept and saying, okay, we need to do this online, but we also need to keep the forward momentum. And, and really make sure that this new commission is getting onboarded to the organization and able to fulfill your duties and, you know, provide that direction to us. So the dates that we have scheduled are today, which is the introduction to strategic planning. We also have the next Monday, we are taking our kind of normal scheduled, well, work session time, and that's going to be about, you know, commission relations, principles and practices, how this commission wants to communicate amongst itself, communicate with, with the public, those kind of roles and responsibilities. And that is from 2:30 to 4:30 PM. On February 9th, we have another morning session and that is Jurassic Parliament, and that is a review of not only Robert's Rules, but really best practices for the conducting of public meetings. And then on February 22nd, which is a Tuesday, it is after the holiday on, on Monday, again, our normally scheduled work session time, it is kind of, you know, pulling these, these things together and really talking about what, if any, anything else that this commission would like to do to update its rules resolution and incorporate what, what you've learned about as regarding best practices, et cetera, so that will be a time for us to, to get kind of conceptual agreement. Next slide. Then following on to the March and the follow-up, you'll see for the March 14th and the 28th, this is where we then take what we've heard from you, the agreements that we think, and we actually write them up and bring it back to you for your formal consideration at the regular business meetings, that will be on the 14th and the 28th, and there's of course, or at 5:30 PM. This March 21st date has a big asterisk there, that is the normal work session time, but we, we've not confirmed that this is actually going to be our first strategic planning session. What we do know is that in order, and Jim will be reviewing this, that we want to get started in, in late March, so I put this in here, a big asterisk. We'll be confirming with Jim of his calendars and then of course coordinating with all of you for, for your calendars. This may be a time that we actually need to call a separate session and have it on a, on a different date. But I did want, want to alert you to, we're actually, we're not going to let a whole lot of time pass between this introduction and we're actually getting started on, on this strategic planning work. And that's it, what I have, and so I'm going to turn the floor back over to Mr. Darling.
Thank you, Sam, and I think that day would work for me, but we can talk about that. So, so as Sam mentioned, I was in city government, my, I don't think I talked about this at the WPPA, but my academic background is I have a bachelor's in sociology and finance and a master's in public administration, both from Illinois. It was interesting, and Sam and I joked about this before, I'm not an engineer, but I was a Public Works Director. Our mayor at the time in Urbana, Illinois said, you know, I'm done with engineers, sorry Sam. He said, this is about finance and labor unions and, and project planning, so it was, it was a great opportunity for me to do that, and I, the other thing I wanted to do is, I wanted to compliment the port and the commissioners for taking the time to do all those things that were, Sam just had up on the board, because it doesn't happen all the time at port authorities, and I think, I think commissions and staff get off on the wrong foot, because they haven't talked about things like, like your procedural rules and things like that, so I hats off to you for doing it. And as we talk about strategic planning today, as Sam says in introduction, it's more, strategic planning is more process, I always say it's about 90% process and 10% content and deliverable, because it's an opportunity for particularly the three commissioners to get together, find alignment on issues, and then get the staff aligned on those and move forward, so it's, and quite honestly, it's more art than science. So, but we'll talk some more about that, so I'm going to share my screen. And let's see if this is going to work. Let me know if that got up there.
Yep.
Okay, so. So, so today is, we've got a few hours set aside and I, it's always awkward, I know, doing this remotely like this, but if, if, please, if we can make this conversational as we can, if I say something you don't agree with, or you've got a question about it, or it seems nuts, you know, let me know, and we can talk about it as, as we go through it. So what we were planning on doing today was talk about some practical decision-making tools that ports can use in the process of strategic planning. Then spend a little bit of time about strategic thinking and planning for ports, and then the last thing we'll do is specifically talk about the plan, as Sam referred to, what's coming up in 2022 for you in the strategic plan and kind of how we've laid it out. I've worked with the staff and Matt Peach in particular about the budget and it, it, going into this year, it feels like we have a good marriage of the budget process and the strategic planning process, and we can talk about that some more. I've got some, this next slide, some interesting port facts that I thought I would share with you. When I was at MFA and then since, actually since then, we've done a number of surveys of ports across the state and also reviewed, you know, the WPPA puts out a annual, I think with Sam, compensation and taxation survey that's really helpful, sometimes it's hard to read, but, so some of the information comes off surveys, I'm often that. 78% of ports operate industrial real estate, almost every port is in real estate of some kind or another, meaning commercial or industrial. 92% of the ports strive to lease at market rates, and that is way up from 2015, when it was only about half the ports. And ports are deeply criticized for competing unfairly with the private real estate sector. And I think this change reflects that, that they're moving to, towards market rates. Ports are not great risk takers either, 75% of them say that they want a tenant with a signed lease before they make a new investment in a property, but of course, you get a new company coming in and we're going to be horsing around with getting you a new building bid over a year, built over a year, sometimes it doesn't work very well. And 25% of the ports will not sell property by commission policy. On the operational side, 50% of ports build and operate boat launches, and 40% of the states' mortgage slips is a small boats, commercial and recreational, or in port facilities. And of the 39 counties in Washington, 37 of them have public use airports and they're largely operated by ports, and it could be GA. There's what, maybe six big commercial airports in the state. Interesting, this study is a little bit old, it's probably, it's from the state, it's probably, probably four or five years old, but about 5% of the jobs in the state are physically on port property, not indirect, but on port property. And this is, I find very interesting, and this is fairly recent, that the average benefit and compensation for a port tenant employee is 73,000 a year, pretty significant. The marine sector is 103, and tourism and recreation, meaning marinas for the most part, is 48,000. So the, and I think that marine sector average is largely driven by the union situation on, on our docks and wars. So, Sam mentioned early on that, when I was with MFA and MFA did the work for the port, these were the things that came, they were the, kind of the brief recommendations, you have the whole report, but was really to reconcile the 2017 strategic plan and the 2050 vision plan, and we might add to that now, water, the destination waterfront work that you've done. Creating an annual action plan, and we'll talk more about those later, and that's really, that's, that's the meat on the bones, that's the implementation strategy, who's doing what, when. New commissioner and staff orientation, which you're doing, which is terrific. Strategically driven budget process, which you're planning. And Matt, I know is working on multi-year financial projections by line of business, which I have to tell you that I'm going to, this is a guess, but most of the ports don't do multi-year projections, and I'm just astounded how they can make this long-term capital decisions without that, but, so it's a good idea, you're going to that. Your financial guidelines are, you've had them for a while, but they need an update. And then the financial forecast kind of goes along with that, that multi-year financial projections, but for each business unit. And your managers are going to tell you, oh, I can't forecast the market, and that's true, but you can, you can make kind of assumed projections and estimates of where you're going to be, more training, update other policies, and then overall have a refreshed message out to the community about the port in the future, which I think Sam will come out of this strategic planning process, so. So let's, we'll get into the meat of it, talk about practical decision-making tools. There are four of these that, and I'm not sure we, which of these we covered at the WPPA meeting. And these tools are, whether you use them or not going forward, though, I think they cause you to think about these issues as you make your decisions going into the future. The first one is mission versus margin, then determining capacity to do things, responding to future trends, which is a very interesting one, and then responding to new opportunities and requests, because a lot of people perceive the port as the bank of the Port of Olympia, and if we have a project, we come to the port, they have resources, and you should be equipped on how to deal with that. The first, a few port terms and concepts. And, and there's no magic about this, there's no, there's, there's no stat, well, there's a little bit of statutory things, but there are generally no statutory requirements for these definitions. But ones I like to use because they impact your cash flow are two of them. One, and you call them Olympia Business Units, like your marine terminal or your marina. Ports also call those line of, lines of business. And they are services products, like buildings, marinas, aviation facilities to meet market demand, and it's where the ports traffic in the private marketplace. And you compete straight up with the private sector, there are private sector commercial airports, Texas, but there are some out there. And their performance is generally measured as you would expect, based on a rate of return, and there's a million ways, of course, to calculate that. The other thing that ports do is traditional governmental activity, and those are ones that are more, we think are more traditional, like parks and things like that that you're doing. And my next slide kind of lists those out a little bit more. On the left there, you can see some lines of business or business units that are pretty typical, the one I draw your attention to is the pollution control facilities. A fast-growing line of business for ports, they're doing it with an expected rate of return. Generally, well, I would say exclusively in Eastern Washington and the wine industry and the agricultural product industry. Traditional government activities are things like programmatic economic development, you know, you're, you're, you're at the Chamber of Commerce, the EDC, you're, you're investing money and promoting the county for economic development. Parks, trails and open space, of course, and then I include this one here. And some people argue with me, but property cleanup, where you don't have a liability, my only example of that is the Port of Bellingham took on the cleanup of Bellingham Bay under an agreement, the state, we had no liability, but we had the resources and the staff expertise, so we worked with the state for quite a while to get a cleanup program for Bellingham Bay, pure environmental cleanup. So any questions on those, do those make sense in those two buckets of port operations?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Do you ever see a, a line of business move to a governmental activity, for instance, if we saw the marine terminal as serving more of a function of public safety, rather than being revenue generation? Would you move it into that bucket, ever?
You know, that's a good question, you, you could, yeah, if, if, if you were, if it was not a revenue producer and you're not competing in the marketplace, like, let's say you made it a, let's make this up, you made it a regional marine fire response station, right, for something. You could consider traditional government activity, now if you contracted, obviously you brought the Coast Guard in, I might treat that as a line of business, as a lease. And there's no magic, Commissioner, about this, so, but just to think about them that way. So the next slide is one that has a great deal of controversy with it, so. This is kind of the typical cash flow for a business unit at a, at a port. In the green there in the upper left are where are these lines of business, and let's, let's call it, let's call it the marina group, say, to discussion. They will get earned revenues from fees and rents, there's some, they're limited by the market, because you don't have a monopoly. State and federal grants can come into play, and sometimes if those business units aren't carrying themselves, they're supported by revenue from other lines of business. And where's the money go? The money goes to them paying their share of overhead, paying their maintenance and operating costs, and cash and debt for capital. Some ports generate a surplus profit from their, let's say their marina operation is an example, what do they do with it? They, they invest it for growth. A lot of ports reduce taxes, Port of Klammer has gone off the tax rolls because their marine terminals have been so profitable that they, they got one to zero tax rate. They can support other business units, or they can go typically to fund those traditional government activities like parks. And some ports, their operations don't cover, their revenues don't cover their operating expenses, and they underwrite their business units with property taxes. And those typically come to underwrite, particularly very small ports operate the, operate, or underwrite the operating costs. A lot of ports underwrite capital cost, and we're going to see some examples here in a second. So I've got a couple of examples that the, that are a little bit different than this. So this is when I was at the Port of Bellingham. So the Port of Bellingham had four operations, business units, airport, marinas, marine terminal, deep water, that was Alaska ferry and cargo, and, and commercial industrial real estate. What happened in those cases is that the, the marinas were, were pegged to break even, but they still paid their fair share of capital and overhead costs for administration, you know, HR and things like that, the executive director's office. The airport at that time, it's not the case anymore, but at that time, the airport, Bellingham International, and the marine terminals required support, and where'd they get it? It came from the real estate division. And I used to tell our real estate people, your job is to keep the marine terminal and the airport open, that's why we're in real estate. And then at Bellingham, property taxes were a separate set of books, all, what they went for is they covered programmatic economic development, parks, and environmental work. Where the, where the port had, I mentioned Bellingham Bay for that type of thing. And they also covered the cost of the commission's office and elections. So very bright line at Bellingham, there were the property tax dollars and there were the earned revenue dollars. And it forced those four operating division managers to run it like a business. And over time, the airport's gotten self-supported, break even, and marine terminals are doing better, I think. Let me show you one more and then we can talk about it. This is, this is my version of the Port of Klammer, and I, with all due respect for Mark Wilson, I, if you ever show this to him, Sam, I, I'm sure I got it perfect, but it's, I'm pretty close, you'll get the idea. They have four operating business units, marinas, marine terminal and real estate. They make enough money that their surplus funds pay for parks and recreation, and I know you were going to have your retreat down there in the waterfront park at the minimums, and there have that outdoor performing shelter that you, community concerts, that's all supported by their business units, they collect no taxes. The Port of Everett tried to do this a while back, and they hadn't quite thought through it, they didn't have enough financial projections, and they had to go back on the tax rolls after about three or four years, and it was a political mess, because you can imagine, you know, they've said how they're getting off of them, they're all, they're running like a business, now we're back on. So with those in mind, let's look at one more. And this is my version with some coaching from Sam about what the Port of Olympia looks like. So right now, the, the four lines of business are the airport, the marina, marine terminal and real estate. And they are contributing somewhat to overhead. Okay, particularly the airport. But their capital costs are not being met by their own revenues, with the exception of the airport. And keeping in mind that grants are in the revenue stream for the airport, so what happens at Olympia is that capital costs for the operating divisions, with the exception of the airport, come from surplus funds, or could come from surplus funds, from the more successful lines of business, but also require, it's required the port over the years to use property taxes for capital. The port also operate, also uses property taxes for economic development, those traditional government services and some environmental work. And I think on the case of environmental, I think, Sam, it's fair to say that some of that's historic liability that you've had, but, right?
Yes, it is, though, I will point out that the tax levy actually does cover some of our normal compliance or what, what I would consider operational cost and environmental.
So that's in the operating cost of the business units, right? I know it sounds complicated, but it makes a difference.
Yep.
This is what your model looks like, it doesn't, there's not, it's, it is what it is, and it's, you know, it's, it's a good model. What I would say to the commission is, think about where you want to be in five years, 10 years, you're not going to do it overnight, change this model enormously overnight. And the one other thing that if, and please pardon me if I'm telling you stuff you already know, but you know, the airport, because you've taken federal grants, there are some grant conditions that any revenue that you earn on the airport either has to go to pay back debt or fair share of overhead costs for the port, but you can't be taking that revenue and building marinas with it directly. You know, it's called diversion, so that's a federal issue. So Commissioner, does this, does this make sense to you, is this what you thought it might be?
Jim, so far so good. I think Sam and I know at least that the airport is the most successful division at the port. You, you got to mention that the 500 or so acres right next to the airport go to support the airport, because the FAA, when they granted the airport, I can't remember the chain of custody, but the, the airport basically came to us through the city of Olympia and FAA, and they said, FAA says to all these small airports, you must have land next to it to help support the airport, because the airports really are by themselves, are not self-sustaining, and so therefore, when we talk about the airport, we talk about all the lease income from those 500 acres, and you're, I mean, I think you're correct that, that the the income that, or positive revenue that the airport makes has to go back towards paying down debt or what have you, it stays within the airport. And which kind of begs the question, you know, last year we had a, came really close to putting together a inter-local agreement over the, what we call the Panatoni property of the new market industrial area, and if that had come to fruition, that would have been a giant revenue stream for the airport, again, that money would have to stay within that, so the airport would just be like off-the-charge success. Off the charts, successful. You know, compared to the other divisions because of that, that, uh. Land airport. Slash leased land alliance.
Yes, it's kind of interesting, Commissioner, because you, you hear airports, it's great when you're getting all the FA. Funding coming in one door and then you, you get successful with your airport industrial park and all of a sudden. Now you're constrained about how you can use that money and. So I, it's, um, I, I, I think this is a pretty good, you know, we're simplifying it here greatly, right? It's much more complicated, but food for thought for the commission about when we get into the strategic planning process in March or whenever it is. Uh, th- this is one of the big topics to talk about and, and like I said, it's not going to change in one year. It's going to take you multiple years to do it. So.
Jim, if I could pu- point out one more thing on, on this and that, that is that, um. The, the, the capital investments, uh, coming from property taxes, really we, we leverage that by, uh, by, by bonding. Typically with, um, general obligation, um, uh, bonds and. Um, I just want to make sure that the, uh, this commission is aware that, that we are fairly topped out on our, our bonding capacity with. Um, we, we actually not looked at it with the increase in our levy. We probably have a little bit of, uh, of leeway, um, uh, in there. But it really puts, puts that emphasis on the, the surplus funds that, um, that, that are coming out of operations. That's really the only source of, um, uh, investments into any type of capital projects, including. Um, uh, kind of, you know, larger maintenance, um, uh, projects that need to be capitalized. So. So our options now, and that's one, one of the reasons, you know, we've really been, been paying attention to what is that cash generated from. From operations, because that's, that is kind of the sole source that, that we have to fund our, our, our capital program.
Right, yeah. Yeah, it's, it's just good to understand this and, and think about it from a, up on the bus or speak about how you're doing with your finances and. From a policy perspective, where you wanted to go, so. Okay, I've got a couple more definitions here and then we'll get to the tools. Um, one thing that's real interesting is that, um. Sorry for my font problem there, um. We connecting with the community. Some ports that are in the wholesale, business to business, uh, marketplace. Don't have the same opportunity to connect that ports that are in the retail, what I call the retail business. And, and example of that, at the Port of Klammer. Um, and Mark Wilson, I've talked about this at length. Why are, why did they develop such great active parks? Because. They realized that they had no retail connection to their taxpayers and community. It was all shipping, shipping brokers, shipping companies in the port. And so that's one of the reasons. They also wanted to pay a dividend back to the community with nice parks, but it gives them a retail touch. If you have a commercial passenger airport, it gives you a retail touch. Parks give you a retail touch. Marines give you a retail touch. People relate to the port. I worked extensively with the Port of Vancouver, Washington, and they were all wholesale commercial. Businesses and they have developed some community spaces and trails and community programs. Just so they have an opportunity to connect with the community, you know, on a day-to-day basis. So, uh, something to think about. You're in good shape. You've got both. So. Um, the other one that I, I want to share with you, the last thing is. You will hear this a lot. Ports will say. Oh, why we're investing tax dollars, why we're doing this because it's good for the economy or it's economic development. Or we invest taxes to stimulate the economy. I think those are fine statements to be made. I think ports would be served better if they were more precise about it. You know, they said, we're investing $2 million in a. You know, you know, commercial industrial park. Of tax dollars, we expect to have it paid off in 10 years and this is the return on it, you know, be more precise about it. It, it becomes the fallback position, uh, to the community and, um. Ports that I think that do really well are very precise about. How they talk about their investments in the economy, because that's what they're doing. So. So, four tools I want to go through, mission versus margin, capacity, preparing for the future trends and responding to new opportunities. So. Mission versus margin is one of my favorite tools, um, and I, I'm not sure we had this at the WPPA meeting, but. Think about this, on the vertical axis on the left. Down at the bottom, you're losing money as you go up that. Axis, you break even about halfway up and then at the top you get your full rate of return, however you define that. So you're making money above the break even line. Along the bottom, on the left, there's little, if any, community benefit. This is your mission. And on the far right, as you move to the, on the bottom axis, you have great community benefit, however you choose to define that. Could be economic development, it could be parks, it could be quality of life, whatever you choose. So, um. And let me give you some examples of these. And this is applicable, by the way, I served on a not-for-profit hospital board in Lockton County for a number of years. And they have struggled with this issue of, we gotta make money, we gotta have a margin, but we've got a mission to ser, to serve the infirm and the ill. And this is a classic battle for. Agencies like port authorities, not-for-profits, some not-for-profits. And so this is an interesting tool to, to use. So. One of the things that happens, I'm going to show you some examples of this in a second. We talked a little bit ago, how do ports typically fund traditional government activities? And how do ports typically fund business units that are not breaking even? Well, how they do it is earn net income. From those business units that are making money, they're above the break even line. They send money to those business units or their traditional government activities that are not. Being able to carry their weight, or as we talked earlier. They. Use property taxes to do that. And let me, let me show you some examples. So this is an example, commercial airport. I would tell you that Sea-Tac Airport makes money. I think you'll, you might find it interesting to note that one of their biggest revenue sources at Sea-Tac is the car parking garages. Uh, and also the retail shops that are in the side, the terminal and the restaurants. Years ago, I met the new. Airport Director at Vancouver, British Columbia International, and they hired him out of the mall industry. He came out of the retail mall industry. Because most of their money up there was made from the mall, the, the businesses, the retail stores and the restaurants. So that's where you want to be. If you can, you want to have something that's got great community benefit like Sea-Tac, huge cross estate. And makes money. Parks and Trails is an example that has huge community benefit, but is, is totally subsidized. I mean, with some exceptions, you. You can charge for concerts, I guess, but it's heavily subsidized. My experience in Bellingham and I around the state is that general aviation tends. To serve a much smaller population, not saying it's not a valuable population or a valued service. But it, and it typically. Doesn't pay its freight, typically if you consider runway navigation cost and all those kinds of things in, into the formula. And. When I was at Bellingham, we wanted to move our general aviation to break even. And, uh, that was pretty successful. I know it was a combination of expense control and rate control. Another one that I can speak to in Bellingham was the marinas, when I got there, were about 25% of the marinas. Costs were being subsidized by property taxes. And I, the commission and I sat down and said, this doesn't make good policy sense. So where do we want to be? We don't want to make money on the marinas, but we want them to break even. And. Another port that's used this tool very well is the Port of Pasco. It, it, it actually, it programs buildings on this. Chart and says, well, there, here's the building today, here's what we want it to be in five years. Um, real estate typically can be a big resource creator. It doesn't have quite as much community benefit. You know, and that's the subjective part. Don't get me wrong, it does. And then things like programmatic economic development. Have great community benefit, you know, like supporting the chamber and the EDC and that kind of stuff. But like parks, that they're, they're not generating income directly to the port. And this is all internal, uh, finance for the port. So one of the things and, um. Sam and I discussed was, was maybe at the session when we start the strategic plan in the spring. Is to actually start plotting your lines of business on this chart and where you think they are. Um, and it's a combination of a quantifiable. Margin performance and your commission, your subjective assessment of where it lies on the mission scale. Any, any questions on this one? Does this make sense to the commission? Is it? Am I confused the issue?
I just had a question about the real estate at the airport. Is it a. Generally accepted accounting principle that we need to tag that into the airport's revenue? Or is it possible that we could be tracking that real estate with the real estate with. Knowing that we're not going to be able to spend that money outside of that business line?
Great question. So at Bellingham, like I, I'll speak from my experience, we had that very same issue. We had two sets of books. I mean, they were, they were fairly transparent, but. We, we kept a set of performance books on the real estate at the airport within the industrial park. So we know how it was performing. But then it, it was part of the whole airport set of books. It was another revenue stream to the airfield for, because of FAA requirements. So you can't keep it separate if you want to know how it's performing. What you can't do is divert the cash. To any other use than the airfield.
I think there's a lot of things where we're dealing with a, uh, communication, both amongst ourselves as commissioners and to the public. Um, so that we can understand how we can make our. Business lines more efficient and more profitable, um, versus things that we need to be doing, whether it's for the FAA or. Or, or the auditor. Um, so I guess that's part of the lens of, I'm still learning. At this point, but that's part of the ones with which I'm listening, other commissioners. Is so that maybe we can modify some of the way this is reported to us and to the public. So that we can have a better understanding of when we're moving the needle because. Having 500 acres lumped in with the airport doesn't help me understand what the airport's doing. It helps. It, does that make sense?
Make a hundred percent that makes sense and, and actually, um, Matt, you're Matt Peach and I have talked about that issue and it's. You know, it's a subtlety, but it, it's an important subtlety to know. So I, it's a good point, Commissioner. I, I made a note of that. So when we. Get to the planning stuff, we can talk about it.
Yeah, and, and Commissioner, I, the, the way I look at it is like, you know, we, we have, um, accounting and, and, um. Uh, reporting requirements that, that, that we have to do it a, a certain way. And then we have business analysis. And, and the business analysis can happen, you know, we can, we can frame that up a, a lot of different ways. Um, I'd also like to point out, just, just, just so you know that, uh, currently that this, uh, the, the sense of. The relationship to the, the airport, that includes the New Market, uh, campus that. And, and Rudy uses this, um, this term of the, the mothership. So. We are still, there is a, um, a, a bond balance payback that the airport has. Um, so, so we are still able to, to, um, uh, quite, uh, within bounds, be able to. Bring the, the airport surplus over in to support the mo- the, the mothership as, as he says, because we have this balance. Now, that balance will be paid off here in, in, in years to come. And then we will be faced with, with the situation of, we have a surplus that is being created at the airport. But we cannot send it back to the, to, to the mothership because then that would be that, that, uh, diversion. So we're not there yet, but it's in our, our not-too-distant future.
Sam, it's like seven or eight years out, right? Something like that is.
I think so, yeah. Rudy, Rudy has that number.
Do we have something that, uh, summarizes where we're at with all of our bonding, both from a timing and a. Dollar perspective, is that?
Yeah, yeah.
That would be interesting to me. I don't know if, to the other commissioners. Um, and I think that just the discussion about whether to separate out. From a messaging perspective and pragmatically, how the tax money is being used, you know, at this point, that might not. Look good for, you know, it sounds like we're subsidizing a lot of things at this point, but as we can, starting with transparency. And then moving forward to improve the profitability, um. I think that's a way to build trust, uh, that we are being transparent about how those funds are being used.
Could you clarify, Sam, uh? Are you done, Amy? You're good? Okay, uh, could you clarify, Sam, uh? I missed that last concept of. Of the airport sending money back to the mothership, meaning the overall Port of Olympia, I guess. And, and why that's, that's cool at this time.
Yeah, and so, so it is that we are able to have that, the surplus that's created by, by the, uh, airport. Be kind of, um, not sequestered, but be able to be used in, within. We found that, that, uh, the general fund, because there is a bond balance that, that the airport still, still owes on. So in years past, um, there were, uh, bonds taken out to, um, uh, support capital projects. At the airport and there's still a balance on that, that, so, so, so then that, that, and then that's not considered a diversion. So the, 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 the airport surplus. Go, goes, you know, kind of in theory to, 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 to pay that off. And that's kept track of, of what that bound, bond balance is at the airport. And, um, that, that, you know, that we're not running afoul of that, that concept of diversion.
Okay, thank you. And, and one more comment for, uh, Jim on this slide. Just to comment that. You know, I like your idea later on, when we get down to. Creating the plan, that we talk a lot about. Each division and where they fall on this, uh, matrix. And then we're, we're realistically. You know, we'd like them to be and, uh, you know, that seems like a good first step in terms of. Establishing goals, long-term goals.
Yeah, I, Commissioner, it is really great and it's, it's, it's complicated, it's simple too. Right, so it, it, um. Yeah, so we, we'll be sure to fold that in. So let me move to the next tool then.
Jim, Jim, can I, I, I want to do my little civil engineering pitch here. And that is, I, I, I want to make sure that both the, the, the commission and the public understand of that, you know. Um, that the, the use of. Um, uh, the, the taxing authority to support. Investment in, in, um, capital projects or really anything that is authorized to do. Is a legitimate public policy position. And, and so there is, um, the, the, there's nothing untoward about that. I would argue in, in many cases that the investment, particularly in heavy, um, uh, infrastructure. Is some of what has propelled a lot of economic development in, 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 in this country. And so. And, and I, I, I use the case in point for utility development. That, you know, uh, there are so many, um, u- utilities that, that are operated that are only. Um, uh, feasible because there is either state or, or, or federal in- investment or a low-cost financing on that. Um, so it's, it's not that there was something wrong with, with that. It's just that, that then, you know, what, what. You know, my hope is that we just make it very transparent and conscious. As to what the position of the port is now, what this commission wants it to be. And then a realistic timeframe is that i- if you do want to move it from something. That was happened in the past to something different, that we have a realistic timeframe to, to, to change that. But I just always want to put my little pitch in for, like, you know, communities across this, this country. Um, have, have, uh, benefited because there was an investment in of public dollars without an expect. Ex- expectation of a business return on this.
Good point, Sam. Yeah, that's really, yeah. And, and, and but for that investment, that, that part of the economy would not have grown. Yeah, so. So here's another one, capacity analysis or assessment, number two. So do we have the capacity? Um, so more strategic triangle, um, says that. Capacity is both internal and external. And in a minute, we're going to focus on the, the internal capacity of the port. But, you know, public value, um, in this model says, you know. What is a, what is a public value that we are creating? What is, what, what is that public value? And is there support for our decision, for our priority or our decision, whatever that decision might be? Is there support out there in the community, in the marketplace? For what we're doing? And finally, do we have the capacity successfully achieve it internally? So. Um, it, it really is a blend capacity. If you have the public support, is there perceived value and do you have the internal capacity? Um, to undertake something, um, as a port. So if we look at. Internal, I'm, I'm going to focus a little bit on. Internal, I'm going to focus a little bit on internal, but operational capacity. It's a combination of all these things on the screen. You know, it's we always think of of staff and money. But it's, you know, it's leadership, it's having a mission and vision internally, it's having strategic relations. And having the systems and infrastructure to do things. So. All of those go into that calculation. And like the mission margin chart, this is one that. Folks have used to determine. Do we really have, assuming we have the external factors in place, do we really have the internal capacity to take something new on? And like the mission versus margin on the left vertical axis, you have low capacity or to very high capacity. And along the bottom on the far left, you have little demand or market demand, community need or market demanding, then on the far right, great demand. And. The commission's role in this defining where you are is to identify the priorities. And then support building capacity where you want to build it. And how do you do that? Well, you you either do, it's pretty simple, either reallocate existing capacity, staff or money, or you create new resources to support it. It's pretty straightforward. So let me give you some examples from the port and the public utility industry. I work a little bit with public utilities. They're a lot like ports in terms of balancing mission and margin. Particularly in the state of Washington. And they have tax, just like ports, they have taxing authority. They're very, very similar. So let's let's look at some examples. This was a property expansion at the, this is Sam mentioned it earlier, the Port of Bellingham, when we acquired the Georgia Pacific property. It, we had capacity to do it. We spent the five or six years before, maybe more than that, maybe. Almost 10 years before that, building staff and financial capacity at the port. And then there was a big community need to control the waterfront in Bellingham and Georgia Pacific was closing and they were just going to put a chain link fence up and call her good. And so we had the capacity for change and we spent about a million dollars of due diligence, assigned three full time staff people for a year. And took on a project that if the Port of Seattle had done, it would have been a trillion dollar project for the Port of Seattle. That's how big it was for Bellingham. But we very thoughtfully created capacity for almost a decade before we knew we were ready to do something big. I worked with the utility district that getting a lot of interest in from the community about producing green energy as a utility district. But quite frankly, they had no capacity to do it. So at the end of the day, they decided we're going to focus on day to day operations and build capacity. Because we don't have the capacity. Another example is I maybe might put Calama in this boat, that expanding parks and trails. I'd certainly put the Port of Vancouver, Washington in here. They got a huge demand from the public, as I said earlier, to to build trails and parks because they have a retail touch with the community. And the Port of Vancouver had enough capacity to do it because they had been focusing on business and had the staff capacity and financial resources to do it. So they did it. A lot of ports, and I can give you a hundred examples of this, they want to go pursue brownfield properties. And sometimes they're right on the edge about whether or not they have capacity to do it. And you know, it's not a all the time a big demand from the public. It's a good thing to do. But there are a number of projects that ports were right on the edge of being able to take on brownfield projects. The Port of Douglas, you know, they were looking at aluminum smelter and, you know, and it was going to be a stretch for them. And then another example is I had another utility district that were getting a lot of pressure to invest in broadband, you know. Backbone. Infrastructure for broadband. And telecommunications and they just did not have the capacity to do it. So what they did was they partnered with a port authority. And their joint capacity allowed them, or is allowing them, they're not there yet, to move forward. So these are some examples of how you can use this internal capacity. It doesn't address those two external things we talked about earlier, but. And we can use this tool when we're in the strategic planning process to talk about, hey, we want to do this or that. So. For the sake of time, I'm going to move on to the next tool. And this one is really interesting, preparing for future trends. I was retained by the Port of Everett. Was very, they're very strategic at Everett. They said, we've spent the last 15 years building stuff. And we have a whole staff of construction people and all of our bonds are going to be paid off in about eight or nine years. And we want to know what we should be getting ready for in the next eight or nine years in the future. And they asked me if I could help them with them. Of course, being the eternal optimist, I said, I said, sure. And then I thought, I don't know how we're going to do this. And so I spent a day or two actually with a futurist in Seattle. And we developed this approach where we would define the trends. We would evaluate each one of them. We prioritize them. And then we'd activate our response. So if that makes sense, hold that thought for a second. And here's how we did it. So. We looked at. In the case of Everett, it was really a great process they went through. It was the commission and staff and an all day retreat. They identified 43 different trends that might happen in the future. People are working from home or. You know, if there was a recession, you know, sea level rise. Pandemic, of course, that was pre pandemic, but you'd have that now. And then for each trend, they said, is this trend or issue relevant to the port? Yes or no? Is it likely to materialize? Yes or no? And if it did, would it have a significant impact on the Port of Everett? Yes or no? And if you got three yeses, then what are you going to do about it? Well, you could still ignore it. You put it in that bucket, you could continue to monitor it. You could analyze it and plan for the future, or you could do something right now. So with the Port of Everett, let me give you an example. They looked at sea level rise. And the first question was, is this trend or issue relevant to the Port of Everett? And they have a lot of, as you know, a lot of fixed docks like you do and sea level rise. It's going to impact those docks. And so their conclusion was, yes, it would definitely impact the Port of Everett. And we had to, you know, we said there's some ranges of projections about sea level rise. We talked about it technically for a while. Is sea level rise likely to materialize? And we had one commissioner that wasn't so sure that it was going to be really happen. And we spent a lot of time on that. And the commissioner finally said, you know, but if I'm wrong. It would be disastrous. So let's assume it's going to happen. So they said, yes. And then the question was, would it have a significant impact? And the question overwhelmingly was, yes, it would have a big impact. So we said, well, what do you want to do about it? So they talked about it for a long time, the staff and the commission, and they decided. That they were going to start to explore engineering solutions to address. Sea level rise at their fixed peers. And in fact. That informed their budget process for the following fiscal year, and they did it. When everything was said and done, I think it was 43 trends that came in that we ran through the gauntlet, so to speak. And when they were done, there were six or seven that ended up in the. Either accept and do something now or analyze and plan for the future buckets. And all of those. Move forward into the budgeting process to. Budget whatever was appropriate for it. This is one that I I would tell you at the Port of Olympia, I might think about sometime in the future. I'm not sure I would do this during your. Your upcoming budget process. I would look at this as a subsequent strategic plan update to get a little bit more. Granular about the future. You have a lot on your plate and but I just wanted to present this to you so you could. Think about it for some time in the future. So let me go on to the fourth tool, which is responding to new opportunities requests. This is, this comes from tenants, marketplace, community. Action groups. And what a number of ports have done. And we'll take a break right after this. They have developed what we've called a new opportunity checklist. And this one, I I do believe it's all public. I can tell you, I think this was the Port of Douglas County. They and and you could have different things, different criteria based on your port on the Port of Olympia, but. When something came in the door, they wanted to know if it's consistent with their values, missions and goals. If it aligned with economic development goals, that balanced mission and margin. Could could they get a rate of return? Could mitigate the port's investment to partnerships or somebody else doing it? Will will something the port's doing be delayed or eliminated? Do they have capacity to do it? Is it part of an existing plan in the community? And with the role the port role should be, is somebody else better, better equipped to do it? So. A few ports have developed these and they use them internally. When somebody says, I've got a great idea, Port of Benton. You should build a bridge across the river and the port Benton doesn't have done this, but this is an example. They can at least internally help their thinking between commission and staff think about whether they want to embark on these new. Adventures. So it's the fourth tool in that that tool chest of things that ports can use. I would suggest to the Port of Olympia that in the strategic planning process in 2022. That we focus on the tools of mission versus margin and capacity as we get ready to do that. So I think we've got a break coming up. And any questions about any of this first part here? And we can always come back to these things. Take a break, Sam?
Yeah, you want to do like a a 10 minute break?
Let's say a five minute break because everybody take 10. Let's say five minutes and we'll we'll be back and. So, okay.
All right, see you soon.
Hey, Commissioner.
Okay, hi.
That looks like a very nice craftsman style furniture you're sitting on there.
Well, thank you. It's, what can I say? You know, it's part of, I'm I'm still recovering, so. Lounging on the king side. You know, it's part of I'm I'm still recovering, so I'm lounging on the king size bed. And you know, that's, this is my my new backdrop. I'm not I'm not smart enough to figure out how some people have, you know, some sort of canned backdrop or what have you. And so probably that'd be advisable because.
Well, actually, I thought it was, I thought it was probably like a like a two seater couch or a big chair, actually. That's what it looks like from here.
Oh, I see. Well, yep, it's a bedroom set we've had for a long time.
Yeah, I had a an old, one of those old Craftsman rocking chairs that my grandparents in Tacoma had back in the twenties and thirties. And had it for years and years and I I gave it to one of my sons. But it was, it was great.
Nice.
Well, Sam, if you're on when we get here, let us know, would you?
He just ran down the hall. She'll be right back online.
How's Bob today? How's Amy? All good?
Bob's good.
How's my fellow Port Commissioners? I love you guys.
Doing good. Trying to think of anything exciting. Little sunshine this week, so that's good.
Really? What part of town do you live in?
Is it not? Was it not sunny yesterday for you?
Oh, yeah, it wasn't bad. Yeah, that was good. Yeah.
Yeah, no, life is good.
How good?
It's fun getting the wheels turning on the budget and the strategic planning and.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, you, you know, I I have to tell you, some people think I'm crazy, but I always totally enjoyed it. I enjoyed, you know, we got in a cycle when I was at Bellingham in like in the June timeframe, June, July. You know, we'd have a all day retreat off campus with the commission. And say, okay, how do we do? How are we doing so far from last year, you know, on our goals? And then we set the goals and it was based on that. The staff would then go develop a budget, come back to the commission and say, here's, here's what we think. And and that's, I think, that's exactly what we'll see here in a minute with with Sam and the crew are planning, which is really a great way to do it. And it is, it's, it's where the action is, where you make the progress, right?
Amy, you make it sound so simple. I I I don't, I I don't have that same vision myself. I, you know, I'm thinking all the comments that I've heard this morning sound, you know, right spot on that. You know, everything, everything has been talked about should be incorporated in that strategic planning. You know, for looking at each business unit separately and, you know, trying to come up with some financial projections, you know, five year projections if we can. I I hope we don't scare Matt. I hope we don't, you know, I know he's got a lot on his plate now. I and I, it's not, not something that I want to pile more on him. But, you know, I think really, from my point of view, one of the key ingredients to strategic planning and 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 planning the future and looking at your future financials is is, you know, your historical data. How you've, how you've done, how you've done in the past, what the trends have been. And, you know, that's one of the key components to to creating that that vision of what you can can accomplish.
Yeah, and it was good segue because we want to talk about that. You know, the only thing I would, I would tell you about that, I I I would, I would advise commissioners to be patient and I don't, I mean, you should expect a lot from your team, but your your staff. But, you know, it may take a year or two to get into a rhythm where you're, you know, you've got the, you've got the financial infrastructure in place. You know, like the projections and, you know, the tools you need. And it'll come though, and I enjoy it. And once you you get clicking on all cylinders, you'll really enjoy it.
I I agree. I think it'll be a really enjoyable experience. And and I and I do, I do think it's going to be a long term, a long term deal. I don't see, you know, getting it complete. You know, in a day or so, but I think, I think you're you're setting out, you know, a good, a good plan to to get things accomplished. So we appreciate that.
And Commissioner, if I can add that, that is music to my ears. And then when I talk about that realistic timeframe of, you know, how we can, you know, turn, turn our direction, really get our systems in in place. You know, I think that we we as staff are anxious to to do this, but also know that we have a whole lot of, you know, day to day operations on our plate as well. So that's the ongoing conversation and kind of towards that end, just on the logistical front here, I want to say that. So we have some members of of staff that are on this webinar as participants. We're going to move them over as panelists so that they they can, because right now the only thing they're seeing are the is is Jim talking and and the slideshow. So we're going to move them over. They're mostly going to keep their their cameras off. But then if we, you know, actually need to call all them, they'll be there. And just as importantly, they'll be able to see to see us where the only thing right now they're seeing is the the PowerPoint slides. So Sheila is going to move some people over and, yeah, so that'll that'll just take a couple of minutes. So Sheila, do you want to start moving people over? You've got it. Here we go. Awesome. And and Commissioners, I'm going to let you in on a little secret too. And this is like, I've had to have this conversation with particularly the newly electeds. Staff watches you and and that, and that is, that is really, I mean, we just do. We 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 watch you for your reactions for, you know, and it really helps us to say, you know, oh, that, you know, they they clearly like that that idea or, you know, they have some real, real quandaries. And so it's not, not just the words that you speak, but, you know, we, we do watch you. And I I would tell you as a newly elected, sometimes that can feel uncomfortable. But but it's all for for good reason and I just want to have, get people over. And I say, I I see them and there's Rudy. Rudy is watching you.
As they're coming over, can I ask a question about the format of the Zoom? On the commission meetings, is it intentional that we can't see the people giving public comment? Is that their choice or is that a structural thing within the?
That's a Zoom function that, that again, they're kind of, the the participants are split off into panelists and attendees. And so like, like for for now, all these, our staff was over as attendees. We're moving them over as as panelists. So, yeah, yeah, it's a function of the how the Zoom is set up.
I'm not sure how the other commissioners feel, but if it was possible to move public comment to a panelist when they were giving public comments so that we could see them for the same reason. I don't know what the other commissioners think about that.
I I just to keep in mind what happens when when you move somebody from an attendee to a panelist. They kind of go into the ethers for for a little bit. They 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 pass through the zone and and it takes a little bit of time, you know, just, but they also, they're like, what happened? I'm not, I'm not anywhere. And then and then they appear as a panelist.
Okay.
I'm in favor of that, Amy. That's not a big, big ask, in my opinion. Let's face it, the more realistic we can make these meetings, the better. Because certainly for many years, we'd have public comment and the person would walk up to the podium. Remember the podium thing and look at all three commissioners? And we even had one, dare I say, radical person that came and it had something to do with water. So he poured a glass of water for each one of us and more or less dared us to drink it. I can't remember what the issue was, but it was years ago. So so we missed that in person chemistry, if you will.
Yeah, I I agree also. I think it would be good to see the speakers. But I'm really hopeful that it won't be too terribly long and we can be back to the podium situation. Anyway, that might be just hopeful thinking, but wishful thinking. But I know for myself, I just make this comment, I always keep the, keep the pictures on just to remind myself I am on camera. You know, I want to do something stupid.
Ready, Sam?
Yep.
Okay, so can everybody still see the the screen? So strategic planning and thinking? Good? We're good? So this, in this section, we want to talk about just like we did about some tools and some terminology in the first part. Talk a little bit about about this very thing about thinking strategically. And so we had a few ideas. First of all, I will tell you that, and I, and I know the commissioner has heard me at WPPA on this. Everybody always wants to jump in these conversations to what we're going to do. And I always encourage people to first consider why we're doing it. Not that we're going to go build a new industrial park in the South County, but why are we building a new industrial park? And what what's the intended purpose of that? So I I always want to push people back to what's first talk about why we're doing something. It makes it a whole lot easier to explain, by the way, when we're hearing a public hearing or something. Secondly, then, then we talk about what we're going to do. And then just right on the tail of that, we talk about how we're going to do it. You know, the 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 finances, the details, the tactics of how we're going to get it done. And so I, when we go through the process a little bit later this year, we'll, we'll, we'll go in this order as we talk about things, why we're doing them. Whether it's a goal or initiative, a particular project or something. It's it's real important that everybody in the organization and the public understands why the port's doing something. So Commissioner just mentioned about having data to look back to predict the future. I I think people in organizations tend to fall into, well, I I should say, fall somewhere on the spectrum. I'm going to guess that a company like Amazon probably is, tends to be more of the left there in the data analysis look back. I'm just guessing. A lot of retailers are. And but you need to think about where you are on this scale. Most ports tend to be a little bit towards the vision, looking forward side of the scale. Looking back is very, very important. So is looking forward. The best example that I may may have used the WPPA are are the, the two, I think it was two men who set up the concert venue at George Washington in the gorge. There wasn't a piece of data that said that a concert venue outdoor would would work in George Washington. There wasn't even a motel in George Washington. And they carve something out that I think it's still pretty successful. But they had a, they had a pure vision and the vision was so strong that it carried the practicality of it. I think most ports tend to, elected officials, commissioners tend to be on the visionary side a little bit. But it's something to think about. The other thing that goes along those same lines is that the difference between accounting and finance. Accounting is looking out the back window of a car, so to speak, with that analogy of where we've been. And it comes from the concept of being accountable for the past, and that's very, very important. And that's differentiated between finance, which is looking out the front windshield about where we're going. And that comes from from the French language to settle a debt is looking forward. So both of these are very, very important. You will see, and I know that Matt is working on some financial and business unit projections. They are just that their projections are not facts. They're what we think are going to happen in the future. Accounting are facts. That's where we've been. We know what road we've traveled. But just keep that as as we go through this and you go through your budget process, what those are. And in this finance business, I will tell you, my whole career makes staff really nervous about making projections into the future. But they're, I think they're deadly critical. So something else to think about in in strategic planning is the role of governance and management overall. And Sam kind of hit on it about the staff are paying attention to what the commission does and says. Your role in governance is foundational to success. You set the strategic direction. I I would also argue too that the commission is is not, the executive director is as well, but the commission is pretty responsible for a functioning culture within the organization. And you can make that a strong culture with a great deal loyalty to the organization and the community it serves or or not. And and a lot of commissions, you know, they sometimes their culture maintenance is not great, but it's an important role for the commission. And you're, and you're, I think your success depends on the quality of your decision making and how you exercise your authority. And I'm guessing that as you go down the road, you're all not going to agree all the time on everything. But you, if you have a quality decision making process, then then you've done your governance job. On the management side, it's obviously the operating arm of the port. It pure and simple, it executes the direction of the commission. But the staff, the management team also has a very strong responsibility to make recommendations based on facts, technical assessments, and provide feedback to the commission on progress. That's a very important role. They're the technicians, so to speak, and they can do that analysis and then make recommendations back. So those tend to be the the roles, and I I use this quite often, it's I modified it from Stephen Covey. But, you know, management's the efficiency and climbing the ladder to success and governance determines what what wall the ladder is leaning on. You've seen that before, but it's really true. The the Port of Olympia has used this. You'll see it in some of your documents. And we're going to have another triangle here in a minute, so don't confuse the triangles. But if if you look at this one carefully, you'll notice that you have the commission priorities kind of in the middle. And driving them are your mission, vision, values, your focus area, your goals. And that's kind of up in the commission role of what the, ultimately, that's the commission in their job description, what they do. At the bottom, we have port staff, which is foundational to the organization and all the operations that you might have, real estate, marine terminals, finance, procedures that are more management driven. The place that you come together is the annual budget. I cannot tell you how many ports I have visited with who treat their annual budget as a perfunctory thing required by law that they do and get it out of the way and it's done and nobody looks at the rest of the year. You are not that way. And the annual budget should be linked directly to the strategic plan. And it's a, what we call a keystone document, the annual budget. It provides the fuel, it provides the roadmap with the strategic plan and where you're going. And so it's, it's pretty foundational to what you're doing. If we take a second to look at, and I don't want to confuse you with triangles, but if we take a second to look at the architecture of of planning and strategic plans themselves, this is the one that I, it always resonates for me. But in your strategic plan, what's foundational is having a vision of the future. A mission that you build on, your values and how you're going to do your work, goals, what you want to achieve, your strategies and tactics to get them. And you can see on there, if if you are, if you are messing around with your vision, mission, values every other year, something's not right. I mean, they are typically attended, they're a decade type of of a decision. And then goal, strategy and tactics, of course, are much more applicable. And by the way, there is no right or wrong in this terminology. And one of the things we'll do in the strategic planning process is kind of agree on the terminology upfront that Olympia wants to use. The other piece of this is creating, I mentioned earlier, an annual action plan. This is the implementation. This goes right along with the budget. It's updated annually. I know the the port staff has talked about having this. It talks about who's going to do, what they're going to do and when are they going to do it? And it's the, it addresses the strategies and the specific tactics of of different goals. So that kind of makes sense. This is the basic architecture of the plan. And I mentioned too, the terminology can change. And on this one, for example, a lot of places use focus. And I mentioned too, the terminology can change and on this one, for example, a lot of places use focus areas. Instead of goals, that statement, we can decide later on what we want to use. So what are these? So typically, and this is traditional, the vision. That's what the future is gonna look like when you're successful. And little after this, we've got some examples of of vision statements from other organizations. The mission gets back to this issue of why the port exists and what its role is in the community. This this is this is probably the fun most fundamental thing. Values describe how you're gonna undertake your work. We'll do more on that. Goals are what you want to accomplish. Strategies are the routes you're gonna take to get to a goal. And tactics are the detailed support to energize the strategies. We'll do some examples here in a minute. Vision statements are optional. Some some organizations use them, some don't, some some interplay vision and mission together. I read a lot of vision statements that are actually mission statements, but they're optional and there's there's no right or wrong answer. The most overlooked is mission statements about why you exist. And that that's one whether and we're gonna review that in the strategic planning process. And the one, the ones that are typically too vague are goals. I I use as a ad nauseam uses example, but if Commissioner Downing and I, we say we have a goal. We're gonna get to Chicago. I use this all the time. That's a different goal than saying we're gonna go east. Right? When we get to Chicago, we're gonna know we got to Chicago. We're gonna know we accomplished the goal, going east, we could do that for the rest of our lives and just keep circling the planet. Strategies tells us how we're gonna get there, what kind of routes we're gonna take and tactics are the little details about. Well, we're gonna run a car from A this or Hertz, we're not sure yet. So but but goals tend to be sometimes too vague. And I will tell you that local public agencies get criticized heavily for having goals that are in that are I'd say inspirational, but they are a goal like we are gonna get financially stronger. That's a whole lot different than saying we're gonna create a financial reserve of three percent of our operating budget. You know, that kind of a more specific, so things to think about. So let's talk about those vision statements. So describe the future when the port's successful. Usually determined by the commission with the staff input. This is a governance issue. And you can see some of these, the one that I that I absolutely love on here is the Alzheimer's Foundation's the second one. Their vision of the world is a world without Alzheimer's disease. It's pretty clear. That's that's their vision of the future. I think you can imagine who the one about a computer on every desk and in every home is. But I think these are are good examples of vision statements going going forward. So they describe the future. A mission statement talks about why the port exists or an organization exists and its purpose in in the community. The court second corporate went down, it's pretty good to accelerate the world's transition to sustainable energy. There are two real port mission statements in port, I will tell you that ninety, no, not ninety nine, forty, seventy out of seventy five ports in the state will have economic or community vitality or promote prosperity trade in their mission statements. And that's that's pretty common. So this too, like the vision is determined by the commission with significant staff input, but it's it's a governance piece. How the port undertake undertakes its work is, I I always like to break it down and make it a little bit more manageable to go through this is who do we value and what do we value? And these are the typical things that you will see. Value statements around that the port values, the community, it values partnerships, tenants, staff, customers, those are the traditional ones and they're all good, important. And what support value integrity, respect, stewardship, leadership, physical responsibilities always makes the list. And a lot of ports will organize these values. If if you get a chance and I'll I'll work with Sam to get you some examples of other port strategic plans. The Port of Vancouver, Washington has really organized theirs nicely into value statements in different areas. And now the lower left there, I just mentioned some that oh, you you will see ports organized around their values. So there'll be a set of values that are operational values, you know, financial values and those types of things. Then goal areas for a port, these are determined by the commission with a lot, even more in the input from the staff. The 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 little banners I put up there are not to suggest that these are the only ones or these are Olympias. These are just kind of typical. And I've kind of grouped them by categories, but you will see a lot of ports will have goals about use and level of property tax debt. There are goals on return on investment. They will have operational goals like safety, maintenance and efficiency. Economic, you know, these external goals like economic development outreach. And then in the upper right there, it's really pretty typical at the core to have business unit targets. And have ones for community facilities, those traditional government activities like parks and trails. Planning environmental standards, compliance and stewardship are usually very strong goals of ports. Ports have in my years of experience of ports in in the their sensitivity to and attention to environmental issues has has really grown significantly. And I would tell you today that the ports in the state are probably one of the biggest users of ecology funds for doing cleanups and advancing environmental projects. And then a lot of internal stuff like personnel, management, you know, policy updates, those kinds of things. So probably what we'll do when we get together is we'll first define. You have a lot of things on the plate already, but we'll we'll first define, where do you think you need to have goals? The financial one always jumps to the top of the page. We need to have financial goals. Okay, then we can work later on what those goals are. We need to have business unit goals. Okay, then we'll work on those later. So that this gives you a sense of goals, goal areas. I did try to put a compilation together of with your staff of the different things that Olympia has going on right now and tried to group these into different goal areas like financial, policy, practice, environmental maintenance. And this is a real list that we will start with when we start the process. You you can read through those that, you know, under financial, having a tax policy. I know the staff is either processed or started or completed lease audit and updates. A a number of policy reviews, these are all internal things. You have quite a bit of work you're doing on environmental issues, compliance and sustainability, like the climate action plan. And then eternal, some of the nuts and bolts like maintenance facilities, equipment, safety. In the operational planning and outreach arena, there are several things specifically in there, their operations are underway. Airport infrastructure, marine infrastructure, marine terminal, real estate. That the list goes on. And then on the planning side, as you well know, you have a number of things that are underway. So th- this is a big list, and I think Sam was referring to this earlier when she said, you know, we've 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 got a big list of things to do. And we need the commission's direction and guidance and prioritizing these in the strategic planning process, adding other things that are out there. And then building budgets that are realistic that can accomplish them. So one thing that happens quite often. I talked earlier about nebulous goals that are a little bit too wishy washy about we're gonna try to drive east. You know, we're gonna make every effort. I I one time in my early days in the port business, I was at a hearing about our strategic budget and I made made a comment to somebody about we were gonna try to improve our I can't remember what it was now, our our maintenance performance and and a really nice gentleman stood up and said, well, Jim, he said, I think we're paying you to achieve it, not to try. And he was very, very nice about it, but he taught me a good lesson. And and one of the things is that some ports have gone to key performance indicators. These can be a double edged sword because they're good to have, but they can also be all consuming. What you have in front of you is an example from another port of a goal, which was to develop an industrial park to accommodate energy related manufacturing and increase local employment. And that port adopted a really simple key performance indicator. The number of jobs created in that industrial park over time. It was, that was very, very simple. And this excerpt that you see in front of you in white is actually the a real one from the Port of Tacoma. Did their strategic plan over the last year or so, and they did a really terrific job of setting goals and how they're gonna measure them. And notes had who who owned it in terms of the staff was very good and that became part of their annual action plan. So very, very specific at the Port of Tacoma. I do caution ports, so you have to be careful because you can get all get all wrapped around the axle around key performance indicators and it gets in in the way of accomplishing what you want to get done. So we gotta be smart about it. And it's also not something you have to set up the first year you do your updated strategic plan. It can evolve over time. On strategies, I mentioned and by the way, those key performance indicators are are largely staff effort to recommend those to the commission. And then setting strategies is off some ports like staff to do this. My recommendation always it ought to be a collaboration between staff and commission. Because you may have a great goal you share in common, but the way the staff wants to get there is not how the commission wants to get there or the commission has a route that staff knows is not practical. So set, these are some strategies and examples from ports. And they're they're pretty straightforward. There's there're all of these are from ports. The one that I like at the bottom is to develop and implement a proactive ten to twenty year repair replacement plan for building fleet rail and infrastructure assets. I know Olympia is working on that. So these are some examples. And then we mentioned earlier that you have a strategic plan. And a lot of course, and I know Olympia wants to move to this, is have an action or implementation plan, we call it either thing. And that would be where you put the nuts and bolts together and who's gonna do what when. And it's largely staff driven. It's reviewed with the commission. This is how we're gonna get to where you want to be commissioned. And these are much more finite maneuver. So this is an example of one and I will be talking about, so I wanted to spend a second on this. I and I made these up, but I use that same strategy that is trying to accomplish a goal about getting financially more secure, but implement a proactive ten to twenty year asset repair replacement plan. The lead is Robert De Niro, if we could get him. The completion date's July of twenty twenty two. And then the tactics we went through here. You'd want to complete a condition survey of all fixed and mobile assets. You can see who our lead is, want to accomplish that, obviously before July. Develop a replacement schedule, we've got a lead, accomplish that by June. Explore equipment leasing option. We've got Danica Patrick doing that's the number one woman race car driver in the country. And then file explorer and set parameters on funding needs and input the budget and we are replacing John Maynard Keynes with Matt Peach to get his work done. So this is largely a staff driven process, but this is how a action plan would look. And you'll see in a few minutes when we talk about the schedule for the strategic planning process, the action plan sort of comes at the end of the process, but but trust me, your staff will be thinking about this kind of detail all the way through the process. So they can support a successful strategic planning effort. The one of the things that some ports have gone to and it it drives a little bit with the vision statement. And this one, it can be scary to to a lot of ports and particularly port staff, but it it gives some examples for the public to better understand where you think you'll be in ten years. And I've I've got some examples here that are are real world from some ports. The port will be approaching break even in all our operations and reducing our dependency on property taxes. New partnerships have been built to improve business recruitment to the community. All port equipment will be on a funded replacement schedule and that there's actually money projected to do it on time. We will see expanded hangar space at the airport. Our new business park will accommodate new startups and growing enterprises and it'll be up and operational. A major manufacturing company will have announced its plan to invest in a manufacturing plant to produce clean energy. And the port receives special recognition for its outstanding financial management. Th- these are real examples from course, I've I've done done this with a few ports. And the concern always is, well, you know, is that really gonna happen? No, but it's visionary and it's what we want the world to look at. It's practical and it communicates well to the public about, you know, real world what they might see ten or fifteen years from now. We had one port from Eastern Washington. This is with our senatorial delegation in Washington DC. And Senator Murray was looking at their strategic plan and this is the page she focused on. She says, no, I get it. I get what you're doing. I understand it. I think they got their funding, so something to think about between now and the time we start the process. So we have a little bit of time to go. I we could take a break or we I could take some questions on this piece and next I want to move into what's the Olympia plan look like, the schedule going forward? Sam, do you wanna just keep going?
Let's pause for a moment, see if the commissioners have any comments or questions or yeah, just take a, I mean, we we, there's been a lot of information thus far. Let's just see where they're at.
I question for you, James. So at the end of this strategic planning process. Is your goal to help us have a new set of tactics, strategies? Mission statement, values and the like, the whole nine yards, because you've gone to from the very general down to the very specific in terms of goals and they stretch out a number of years.
Yeah, so we, so this the staff, you know, Lisa and Sam and I and the crew have been talking about couple observations. You have a lot on your plate right now. You have a lot of things that came out of destination waterfront vision twenty fifteen fifty. A lot of things on the plate that we need to get prioritized and organized to go for forward and and make sure that that you can deliver on them, right, and make good progress on them. We were thinking that on the the fun fundamental stuff like vision, mission statement, maybe even values. We would spend some time on that in the beginning of the process, but dedicate more time, energy and resources of the commission on getting these current real life initiatives, challenges you have right now, get them organized and prioritized. And and then you'll see here in a minute on a slide work towards having a twenty in twenty twenty four, developing a twenty five to twenty thirty strategic plan. And I say all that because we'll do as much as that as we can, Commissioner, but but we also don't want a short change, but getting your all the items on your full plate organized and priority prioritized. So that makes sense. I think I think in, in somewhere in between, I think it's my shorthand. The commission said, you know, we start this in the spring and the commission says, well, we're, we're going to start all over and our mission is to. Develop pollution control facilities for. Uh, for the county. I mean, I could be a facetious here. I think that would be kind of a change. I don't, I don't think we're going to be there, so. We, we want to. Sam, if you get that correctly, I think we want to be careful, but do a review and a. Discussion about those basic things, but not take away from the prioritization.
Well, uh, another comment. I can't emphasize enough that. This is not an ordinary. Strategic planning process because the port. You know, this particular port is at a crossroads. You know, we're coming off of. Six years of a certain kind of port commission and now we have a new port commission. And plus we're coming off of COVID. Let's pray to God, you know, we're like within weeks or months away from. The end of Omicron. So it's really a, a chance to. Re, reevaluate and. You know, focus. Like Commissioner Evans likes to say, you know, I think, uh, what is the. What does the port look like to the public and, you know, and, and what, what's our part to play in terms of. Changing that image and, and becoming a port that, that. Fits better into the community. So that's just one, one example. And then of course we have a. You're right, we have, um, you know, carryover issues and things we're concerned about right now, like Destination Waterfront and like the. New market area, just to name a couple.
We have not laid out the specific schedule. I mean, I've got some ideas I want to share with you, but not all the details yet. Because we wanted to have this discussion today first, and so I'll, I'll move back with Sam and the crew and, and talk about that, so. Anything else? Would, we want to move on to the Olympia plan? Sam, take your time?
I think so.
Okay.
If it, if it's okay, I'd like to take a couple of minutes.
All right. I could use it too.
Okay, thank you. Hey Bob. Commissioner Bob. Bob, can you hear me?
I can, Joe, what's up?
Where, where, uh, do you have an office you go to every day?
Yes, I do.
Whereabouts is that?
I'm in it right now. It's, uh, right across the street from the Redwind Casino.
Oh, okay, very cool.
There's, we have a, we have our, uh. Convenience store with the gas station and my office is upstairs from the store.
Oh, I see. Okay, good. I think I know where you work, Amy. Generally speaking.
Yes, just next to SPSCC. Bob's got, I don't think it's your building, but those two buildings that look like the wind are some of the coolest buildings in. Thurston County, in my opinion. Really cool.
Those, those seem to be a prob, popular design. Lot of, lot of people like that. It, it, if you, if you look, it's actually, uh. It, it's supposed to replicate the river and, and waves of like out in future sound and then the. Some of the siding on the building is, uh, um. Shingles, so it's like salmon scales, you know, that's. Yeah.
I always just assumed it was wind because of red wind. So that's good. Now I know. And Joe, your office looks the most comfortable, so.
I have a, I have a, a kind of a cushy office, shall we say.
Okay, I think we're all back. Jim?
So. So we talked about the tools and some of the, the terminology and things like that. And then a little bit about some strategic planning concepts. And now we want to go into, um, a little bit more specific about. How we want to look at the strategic plan process here in twenty twenty two for you. But typically in these, getting a game plan together about who will be involved. I think the, the thinking now, and, and this is still up for commissioner, obviously commissioner input, but. My observation is that you have had a tremendous amount of community input on these plans. Destination Waterfront Vision twenty fifty. A lot, and there's a lot of work to be done to. Uh, get those things prioritized, which is the, the top priorities for the commission and get them organized into a strategic plan. I would suggest that, that at this go around at this time. You, you limited the process to the commission and staff to let you take this big load of stuff that you have and get it organized. You know, I, my guessing it'll be senior staff, something Sam will be your call. But to do that, so a lot of ports who haven't had the input that you've had to date will start from scratch and have a long. Long engaged public involvement process. I, I think you've had that and now is the port needs to respond and how you're going to respond to all that public input through a strategic plan. And get it into the implementation phase to move forward. So, um, that, that's thought and recommendation. When should the plan be completed? It should be completed by the time you, you. Pound the gavel on the budget process for, for fiscal year twenty twenty three. And the staff typically is going to start working on that. They haven't already. They'll be working in earnest on that in the midsummer. But get a preliminary plan, a preliminary budget, excuse me, to. The commission in kind of the August, September type of timeframe. And then, as you know, commission, you, you have to have a public hearing on that and then adopt that budget. And there's some time constraints, uh, under the law when you do that. By the end of the year, not by the end of the year, by probably November, I think is what your schedule is saying. And then, uh, what are the expected outcomes? And I think the, we're going to talk about those outcomes here. But I think what they are is to get organized and prioritize the, the things that you have, find out what else is out there. And it's a time to find alignment on those priorities between the commissioners and between the commission and the staff. That will be the outcome of the process. So I've just got a few slides here. I think it's got four left here and we'll, we'll be able to have some time for discussion or. Get out a little early. So this graphic is intended just to talk about, and I've got another one coming up that's in, in painstaking detail that we can talk about. But the process, strategic planning process in twenty twenty two. And it's designed to integrate work that's been done to date, because on the left there. Refresh the foundational direction and, and Commissioner Downing, that gets to your comment about, are we going to look at mission values? We can talk about that in the process. And the, the, the big thing is to operationalize the commission priorities through the strategic plan. Which folds into an action plan for twenty twenty three on the right there and to the budget for twenty twenty three. And where does all this come from? Well, you have a strategic plan from twenty seventeen. We'll want to look at that. You have your budget performance in twenty twenty one. You have your own commission priorities. Uh, you all had platforms that you ran on. You've got some really great public involvement pieces in Vision twenty fifty and then the Destination Waterfront. To fold all and into that, integrate them and prioritize and then. Pop them out the other end of the process into, into being operationalized. But that's sort of the approach. Let me go through these and then we can, I can come back to one of the slides. We want to chat some more. Um, if you look at the big picture, here we are in twenty twenty two. I think what would make sense is, and yeah, this can change too. You can have plenty of time to, to. Rethink this before a year from now, certainly. I would recommend just summarizing here that. By either in twenty twenty four or early twenty twenty five. You have a much more robust strategic planning process that sets a set of priorities. And goals and strategies for the time period from twenty five to thirty. There's nice five year increments. Would you annually update those in the future every year, but have a big wholesale revision and look every five years? In this year, twenty twenty two, we'll, we'll have that look and then we can have updates and reassessments in twenty three and twenty four. You can do that all internally. You, you, you may, probably won't need a facilitator. You can do all that internally. And then, of course, you can implement those priorities in twenty three and twenty four that, that were developed the year before in the process, so. This is food for thought. This is a topic that we can talk about at the strategic planning process itself. But like you have to be thinking about. Not only annually, but multiple years and where you're going to be. So. Let me walk you through without giving you all headaches, what the process might look like. So. And then we, this one we really can focus on. So sometime in the June, July timeframe. And well, after today, we'll, Sam and I will firm up the dates. Although you have that March twenty one date to get started, but sometime around June or July. You know, we're going to have a, a, a strategic plan draft in pretty good shape is the idea for you to review. So how do we get there? Well, we want to get that done, that strategic planning thing by the end of June, sort of early July. And that would be our strategic plan development period. It would start initially in this month and starting into March, there's some. Work we need to do to get ready for the retreats that we propose. Synthesize some of the previous work and get into a manageable template, so to speak. I don't mean that literally, figuratively. To be able to have a great discussion about some real world things in the process. We're seeing a strategic retreat, um, in, like Sam mentioned, in late March. And at that retreat, we would have staff presentations on business unit plans and baseline budget and. You know, Matt's going to be working hard on those and that's asking a lot of your staff because they're busy. But I think they're going to make an effort to do that. Reviewed at some depth or length, we can talk about the vision, mission and value statements. And then start prioritizing some of these key initiatives, projects and projects that came from all of that stuff you've done before. And set the, the initial goal areas. Remember, not the goals necessarily, but where we need to have goals. And I will tell you, doing this work is very messy business and my job with Sam is to kind of. Un, kind of pull the spaghetti noodles apart and straighten them all out for you from time to time in the process. So that, that's what I'm paid for. That's what Sam's good at. So. Sort of. Embrace the messiness of strategic planning because it is. Then we think maybe a second retreat. We might need a third one. Well, Tim and I can talk about that. In, you know, May, June timeframe, but all leading up to that. That having a, a draft plan in late June. At that second retreat, we would reconfirm those key initiatives, projects and, and priorities. As, and we'll, we'll translate them into goals and we'll confirm the mission vision values at that time. And the plan will start taking some shape. So. How does it blend with the budget process? Well, back at the ranch. Matt and the business unit leads are, are working or will be working on business unit financial plans. And capital improvement plans. um, and capital improvement plans. Um, and they will start to be thinking about even now about some preliminary budget, the structure and what it start look like and get some of those background things incorporated. And with the idea of being informed by the strategic planning process, because they're going to be at these meetings and then they can start to draft a uh, first very preliminary budget. I, sort of in the July timeframe. And we would have our first budget retreat and review those strategic plan draft at that time. And, um, look at the draft one of the budget, which will be a little bit less constrained. Because we don't know at this point what the priorities will be. So this one's a little bit less constrained with reality. And then prioritize within physical and capacity constraints, start to inform what the budget's going to look like and what the ultimate strategic plan will look like. Staff will go back, do another round of budget, have another budget retreat and will, with the commission, review draft two of the budget. And this will be the start of them actually developing that preliminary budget so that you can formally consider it. What happens next is the staff after that second retreat now go, um, starts to, this is the, this is the nuts and bolts here of doing this work. Finalizes a budget in the strategic plan for your more formal consideration. But you are informing the process all along the way. Um, the staff then, if that gets a little bit firmer, we'll develop, they'll start to develop the action plan and, and I I will help them with that, give them some support in doing that. And that's the details of tactics. The who, when, what, who's going to do what in 2023? You ultimately get to a budget hearing in the fall and then produce a, an approve, a budget strategic plan along with the action plan going forward. So that's, that's the process. Um, and this is what that, that's the detail of this one. And so I, I will leave this up for a second if we want to talk about it. And I, I would ask the commissions and diligence to, as we go through this with Sam will be targeting all these dates and there's a lot of staff working here, so it'd be some flexibility, but this is generally, I think, Sam, where, where you'd like to be, correct?
Um, yeah, that, that, that's correct. And, and of course, as we actually get to putting dates on the calendar, there might be uh, some things like, okay, we have the, 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 um, a budget retreat two in the, the, the first week of September or something, you know, so there, there, there's a little bit of flex there as when we actually get down to calendar during. Um, the other thing, and this has been where, you know, we really even now, um, uh, began our talk about, uh, capacity. And, um, and it's, uh, you know, of all the other things that are going on at the same time. And, uh, and so for, you know, commissioning a consideration, we will have the, uh, five member, um, uh, the, uh, changing to a five-member commission, um, ballot proposition that will, um, be uh, work between April and, uh, and, and the end of the year. We have Capital Lake, Deschutes Estuary, EIS that will be, uh, coming in. Um, we're really, um, delving now into, um, the butt inlet and remediation efforts and potentially how tho- those tie back into, to Capital Lake. Um, we have, uh, the centennial celebrations that, that will be happening throughout the, uh, the year. Some, uh, really key, um, uh, lease considerations that will be coming up. So, so all this is, is happening kind of at the same time that we're running that, this process.
I, in, in this process and as you update, do it, you, you repeat the cycle, not necessarily this amount of detail, but in the future years. It will help with all those decisions and all that.
Absolutely.
This is a gift to the staff to tell you the truth, to know what you're, that. And they're, you know, they're ready, they're, they're in, they're ready to go. And so, um, this is a very important piece of the governance element for the commission.
How do you handle the multi-year planning? When you have elections and you, like this year, have two new commissioners who could drastically change the, how do you do multi-year planning given the commissioner makeup?
Well, um, it's interesting. Um, I, I think there's two ways. One is that some of these, some of these, what we, we call Keystone documents, like multi-year forecast, the strategic plan. They start to create institutional character and, and system for the port. And that's why I always over, I emphasize probably to a fault that the budget process and the street plan process is so important for that consistency year to year and between leadership changes. Um, the strength of these institutional documents, these Keystone documents is is, is tell you how well you're going to weather that storm, assuming there's a storm. I don't mean to say that all the time, but you know what I'm saying? Any change in priorities. The other thing too, quite frankly, is a practical matter, is to be smart about when, uh, majorities change on the commission or potentially could change what year those are. And, um, you know, plan for that in the planning process, so to speak, I guess is what I'm saying. So. I, I what I have found is that the and this is for watching a lot of ports, some of them very volatile at the commission level and some haven't. That the port's overall agenda and priorities typically are like large ships that don't change. They're not speedboats and they don't change direction too quickly. Um, and part of that speaks to how strong the institution is. And I think doing this kind of thing makes the, it's like going to the gym for the institution. It makes it stronger. So those are roundabout way of telling you, I think it's institutional strength that can survive those that whiplash, if there is any, but there's typically not that much.
Yeah, and it, I, I would add to that, uh, Commissioner, that there are, there's this, um, uh, distinction between the, um, uh, you know, that, that a, a current, uh, commission cannot, um, unduly obligate the actions of, of a future, um, uh, commission. And so no, a new commission can come in, they can certainly, uh, change things. But it also doesn't replace the, the contractual and financial obligations that, that, that the port has. So, you know, obvious one, you know, a new commission can't come in and say, we're not going to pay those bonds. You know, like, there, there are just some, some obligations, you know, we, we have leases, we have, have things that, that are in place. So, um, that, um, and, and I, I very much use them the metaphor of, um, that Jim is like, you know, how, how much you can turn that, that, the, the ship is, you know, really that's the ongoing question. And then, and then what is that realistic timeframe for if you're choosing, uh, the, uh, the direction? You know, how long it's going to, to take to see the, you know, really results of where you were headed before and where you're headed now.
And I, I would add to that too, Commissioner, that the, the, the budget strategic plan and action plan are all sort of like the sheet of music for an orchestra or the script for a play. That's where the, the whole orchestra, the whole staff and commission are, come together. And they're agreeing on what the, the play's going to look like or the music's going to sound like and and, um, I, I, it's, it's, it's just imperative that you have alignment on those topics. If you want the port to be successful and run efficiently and cost effectively, that's what it, that's what it takes.
So can I, uh, offer a comment also? I think Commissioner Evans brings up a good question, and since I was part of the last commission, it occurs to me that you know, you do desire some continuity. But you know, what is that continuity? In other words, what was the flavor of the last, say, six years? What was the flavor of that commission? And you know, one thing is you referenced, uh, Destination Waterfront. It doesn't, you referenced, uh, Vision 2050. Both of those, the last commission approved and authorized and they, they have a certain output, which we still have. It's on paper. You know, this is what the community and the commission desire to do. Um, so that's one thing. Another thing you have are any significant resolutions. And, and whether they pass, or they pass two to one, or they pass three zero, um, as a guide to, you know, how the commission was thinking. Another thing you have is, uh, taxation policy. Um, I think we've gone from, I can't recall exactly, but in any given tax year, we've gone from one extreme, which is adding one percent, which were to the tax rolls, which we're allowed to do without with a simple vote. And also dipping into, I think, something called bank capacity. We've, that's one extreme and the other extreme is this past year, barely any tax increase at all. Um, so that's another way of, uh, capturing what the past commission how they felt about certain things. And so there's ways to capture, uh, Commissioner Evans and Commissioner I L. I mean, what the flavor of that last commission was, you know, when they did agree and you know, what, what we want to take forward from that. And then, and like, uh, James and Sam say, you know, moving the ship a tiny bit. Based on how this current commission feels.
That makes sense. And hopefully we can get the structure such that we all agree we're eating ice cream and this year it might be chocolate and next year it might be vanilla, but we aren't going to go have a ham sandwich.
You know, the other thing too, I would share with you that, 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 uh, Commissioner Downing, that ship analysis is, you know, you turn a big cargo ship one or two degrees. It, it's a big change in direction when you, you know, you know, mild, nautical miles down the road. So, um, yeah, so it's, uh, it's an interesting thing. And I, I would just encourage the commission, I know you will, is to take the really big picture up on the bluff. When I say that multi-year, you know, this port's been around for a hundred years this year. It'll be around for another hundred years and we all have a little touch on it for a very short period of time.
And I think that, Commissioner Downing, you'll be able to guide us as to your experience with that and and ways we can make things more solid for, for the future.
I'll certainly try.
Well, Sam, I'm just going to end it on that slide there. So, um, any other discussion?
Um, yeah, I, I, uh, again, and we will be uh, working on our, our schedule even for, uh, what will be happening in, in March, you know, continuing in here in February to get um, some of these, uh, retreat, uh, topics. Um, uh, finished and lining up so you can, you know, dive right in. I also want, want to be mindful of, um, that, um, these port commission positions are meant to be a part, uh, part-time service on, on your part. And so I'm always mindful of, of the, the time that we're asking of you and really trying to make really good use of, um, you know, the, the, the time that you're here. So, um, appreciate your, your individual feedback on, uh, the value um, that you experience and, uh, making sure that this is really, um, uh, uh, fulfilling the needs that, that, that you have and that, that, that we're in alignment because we can, we can adjust as, as we continue to move forward. Um, and yeah, I'm, I'm, I just, I'll be looking to, uh, feedback from you individually as to our, our um, uh, timelines realistic, is the time that we're asking for, from you, uh, realistic.
Well, um, so we're winding down. Is it time for wind-up comments as we're winding down? Anyway, I just want to say that, um, you know, I'm, I'm actually frankly, a little nervous about doing the whole strategic planning thing this early in my, uh, in the new commission's career. I used to joke with Sam before the year got started that the only thing we should do in the first six months is approve consent calendars, for example. So I, I just encourage, uh, Commissioner I L and Commissioner Evans to feel free to overtalk the thing. You know, feel free to overtalk it and really, really, uh, understand every step of the way because you know, having been through this, uh, five years ago, it really is, I guess you could say, pretty cerebral because it's not, it's not, you know, do we build a building or do we make a street or build the street or do we lease a property? It's just all a hundred percent concepts. Am I right, James?
Yeah, for the most part, but we do, we do want to translate it down to what buildings we're going to be building and though, but I mean, it's under those umbrellas, it's conceptual, but it, then we could come up practical at the other end, absolutely.
Okay, okay.
So, and the hard stuff, to be honest with you, the hard stuff is the conceptual stuff. You know, the, where we're going to be and actually, and that's the messy part that what building and truck we're going to buy gets to be a little easier down the road.
And, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, if we are staying in our lane as commissioners, um, that should be a lot of staff work on that anyway. So, um, maybe, maybe that will help guide us. Uh, our inexperience will help guide us to staying in the conceptual lane rather than getting into the staff work.
Yeah. I, you know, I think too that, uh, I, and, and, and thanks for your, uh, your comment, Commissioner Downing. I think, uh, I think you're absolutely right when it comes to the actual port operations and, uh, and, and those things, I think, you know, the strategic planning process. Uh, I, I, I know I've been through it quite often, quite a bit myself. I'm, I'm sure Amy, uh, has also, and I, you know, I, I think that as long as we, you know, we remember that we are, um, we're just a point in time. You're, you know, we're not always going to be here forever and, and we want to make this, uh, make these plans with that in mind that we're going to, uh, um, you know, benefit future generations. And, uh, um, you know, keep that in mind, then these decisions we make today will transcend any change, change in leadership that we face here in the next few years. So, uh, I'm confident this is going to go really well.
Yeah, and, and I would offer up a, a, a large part of the, um, the, the value that is, is establishing this structure and really incorporating this type of strategic thinking and planning in as a regular function of, of the port. And that is something that, um, will, uh, outlast, last all of us, um, probably here and, and I think really um, serve the organization and serve the community.
Yeah, and one of those prongs being culture, I think that that's some low hanging fruit for all of us with our different backgrounds and expertise as far as how to improve the culture amongst the commission, commission staff, and then also with the community. Um, we don't have to have an understanding of all of the inner workings to make some progress there, which then will, once we build some knowledge, um, we'll have set up the structure of the culture so that we can actually do something. So.
Well, thank you, Commissioners.
Yeah.
Been a little bit early here, so it gives the gift of time and and it was a pleasure to do it and looking forward to this, working with you and Sam and the, the staff would be, it'll be, it'll be fun to be with some high-energy stuff, so we'll have a good time.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate the appreciate the information.
All right. With, with that, and, um, you, you, you can, um, we're kind of in a retreat. Um, uh, a work session, so I don't think you necessarily need, uh, need to have a motion to, to, to adjourn, but, um, because we're, we're in that definitely more, more informal, um, uh, part of our time together. So with that.
Looks like we have consent anyways, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Good to go.
All right.
Your next time.
See ya.